Item one, call the meeting to order and record the members present in absent.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Here.
McDermott?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Ellis?
Here. Item two, read the open meeting compliance statement.
I, the undersigned clerk of the Board of Education of the Alba Independent School District, number one of Woods County, Oklahoma, certify that prior to December 15th of the last calendar year, the date, time, and place of this regular meeting was filed in the office of the county clerk of Woods County, Oklahoma. I also certify that at least 15 hours prior to this meeting excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, notice of the date, time, place, and agenda of this meeting was posted in prompt public vehicle location of the meeting, which is my handle, September 2016.
Item three, administer the oath of office to board member Steve Ellis. I, Steve Ellis, do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma, and that I will not knowingly receive directly or indirectly any money or other valuable thing for the performance or nonperformance of any act or duty pertaining to my office other than the compensation allowed by law. I further swear that I will faithfully discharge my duties as a member of the Board of Education of Alba Independent School District, number one. Signing of the loyalty oath to new board member Steve Ellis. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States of America and the Constitution and the laws of the State of Oklahoma, and that I will faithfully discharge, according to the best of my ability, the duties of my office during such time as I am a member of the Board of Education of the Alba Independent School District, number one, of Woods County, Oklahoma. Item five, signing of the confidentiality statement by board member Steve Ellis. Do I need to read it too? Okay. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States of America and the Constitution and the laws of the State of Oklahoma, and that I will faithfully discharge, according to the best of my ability, the duties of my office or employment during such time as I am an employee of the Independent School District, Item six, action to reorganize the Board of Education. Start with the position of president.
I move that we continue with Steve Ellis as president.
Do we have any other nominees for president?
I second that motion.
Martin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Ellis?
Aye. Now the position of vice president, which was held by Jane.
You want it?
Yeah, I'd be fine.[263.12][263.12](Laughter).
I move we have Jane stay in the position.
We're just gonna go in a rut here.
Would you like me to do the rest of them?
Yeah.[272.45][272.45](Laughter).
A second. Ellis?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Martin?
Yes.
Position of clerk.
He's our clerk. Is it Linda or is it?
Either clerk.
Are you the clerk?
Okay. Nominate Linda.
It's gonna be difficult.
Have a second.
Second.
Slater?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Martin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Ellis?
Aye.
And the position of deputy clerk.
I nominate Tiffany Slater.
McDermott?
Aye.
Martin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Ellis?
Aye.
And item seven, discussion on possible board action vote to accept the audit report from the firm of Charles Devon Carroll concerning the 2014-2015 audit.
Well, we've already completed a bit of the 2016 audit by witnessing your loyalty oaths and everything, so that part of it's covered.
I'm glad I could help.[354.24][354.24](Laughter).
The booklets that you have in front of you are, of course, the 2014-15 fiscal year. Your superintendent keeps you tuned in to what your financial positions are on a monthly basis, so I'm not gonna, you know, relive all of those things that happened in June 30, 1915, or 2015. And so if you want me to, I'll just go ahead and proceed with any findings and opinions that we have on the audit report itself. The opinions are delivered on financial statements, internal control, and compliance issues with the federal government. On the financial statements, the opinion that we give is called an adverse opinion because you do present your financial statements as authorized, but they're not in compliance with generally accepted accounting principles because we don't have accruals and receivables and things like that. It's on a modified cash basis. It ends at a fiscal year. If we have a debt at that point, it's reserved and held to be expended from that fiscal year and not going into the next. So our appropriations restrict us from obligating into a next fiscal year to be paid from that fiscal year's appropriations, and that's why it's adverse. Regulatory system is approved by the state auditor's office and the state Board of Education. The internal control, we have what we call an unqualified opinion. You would think qualified would be better, but unqualified means that there were no concerns or issues that came to our attention that we would consider to be a material misstatement. However, we do have one item that we'll discuss in a moment about significant deficiencies in the internal control area. On the federal programs, we tested the child nutrition programs and the special education programs, which includes the cooperative education area, and in that testing, we did not find any issues with compliance or controls over those areas. So both of those fields were required to test up to one-half of the amount of federal expenditures you make in a fiscal year, so the combination of those two met that qualification. And again, we didn't find any areas that we felt reportable to the administration. The one item that we did address, and if you'll turn back to the back of your audit report to get to it, gonna be page 19, numbered at the bottom. This, again, as I mentioned, this deals with internal control, and in our responsibilities, we are required to check a large sampling of employee payroll situations and the board minutes, and in the board minutes, we reviewed and found that the Board of Education had authorized a stipend or identified as a bonus at the latter part of the first semester. The, I'm not saying that there shouldn't be such an item, but we don't have a criteria that the individuals or the recipients of the stipend were to meet in order to be eligible to receive such a stipend. It's recommended that, if you look down there at the bottom where you see 15-01, the statement of condition was employees of the district were given a bonus. And criteria is a bonus may be paid to a school district employee if paid pursuant to terms, conditions, or provisions of the employment contract. Cause and effect, the employees of the district were given a bonus during 2014-15. The terms of the condition or conditions of the bonuses were not addressed in the employment contract. And our recommendation is that the district should identify the terms, condition, or goals to be met in the contracts or through negotiations that would entitle employees to receive such bonuses. And I prefer to use the term stipend rather than a bonus. Public monies cannot be used for random bonuses. You can have, like I say, a criteria to be met, and if that is met, then a amount can be determined to provide the stipend to the employees. But with just a vague Christmas bonus, it's not, it's really not eligible for the compensation. And again, I'm not saying that a particular criteria was not met, it was just not addressed in the minutes or in the motions, and so in the future, I would recommend that there be some threshold identified in order to provide this.
Did we not use full-time, or did we have some sort of something in there identified? Or what criteria?
There were dollar amounts established, but there was no purpose. It was just a Christmas bonus or a stipend, year-end stipend, or, and I'd also recommend that you address that and use a one-time, so that it's not just construed to be a part of the ongoing salary.
Right. Now, if we do a stipend, if we call it a stipend, we don't have to go through negotiations and all of that, am I right?
It can be determined within negotiations with a certain criteria to be met, or it can be addressed at the beginning of the year in an employment contract if we become a four-point district or whatever the determination is, as long as it's addressed and it's met, then the eligibility is there.
I think what we actually used in it was a Christmas compensation. But that's not clear enough either.
Keep in mind that there was no basis.
For that.
For that, and employees are expected to do their best, and so if they do their best, we can't really reward them with public monies. Private monies are a different situation, but the public, on a public basis, we have to have some kind of goal to be met in order to get that, such as the board-certified personnel. They met a criteria, and then that's their entitlement to that additional funding during the year.
Are loyalty bonuses, Cylon bonuses, are those legal? I mean, they have a-
If it's addressed in the contract.
We did that too, didn't we?
So it doesn't have to be a contract item, though? It doesn't have to be addressed as their salary?
As, you're saying as a regular part of their salary?
Right. It does not have to be addressed that way?
No, it can say a one-time item.
Okay.
If, if the results are accomplished.
Okay.
One-time item could be as simple as that all certified, non-certified have met the requirement for professional development, and they will pay X amount of dollars.
If you have, yeah, professional development, and everybody meets and signs in, and a safety course or whatever it is, just as long as, as I mentioned-
We determine as a board that they have met that.
You have to have something set, a goal to be met.
And it could be to maintain the high excellence that we have or whatever, right?
An ongoing, if it's made, if it's maintained each year.
Doesn't have to be something that hasn't been attained yet. It could already be attained as long as we maintain.
Correct.
This status.
But it needs to be identified. Any other questions on that? Well, everything else that I tested was in very good shape, in compliance with internal control procedures. The appropriations were all, you spent well under your appropriations. There weren't any expenditures made from funds that weren't allowable. The activity fund was handled very well, very, you know, the receiving procedures, no commitments prior to authorization. Each thing that we tested came in in that area. I would recommend that you remind your personnel that they cannot obligate district or activity money prior to authorization, because we can't test everything, and it doesn't say that there couldn't be a material item out there that we may have not covered, but in our sampling of those suspect areas or typical areas, we didn't find any inconsistencies of the law.
We probably discuss it every time we meet with principals and purchase orders come across.
And they pass it down, yes, pass it on. And that's a good thing to, you know, express during your staff development programs at the beginning of the year. Do you have any questions about anything else of, that we did test, or what our review consisted of, or you can pretty well tell that we go through expenditures, receiving procedures, federal compliance issues, and the board minutes. That's how we turned up the one issue that we had to address, and then we follow up with that and go into testing the payroll procedures, and then it surfaced on that as well. It was properly taxed, so everything was correct except the identification on it.
Where does it show where we did come in under budget? Is that, is there a certain place that's easy to find?
Yeah, if you look at C. And that's gonna follow page, what is it? Page six, it'll be the third page after page six numbered at the bottom. And if you'll look at the third column on each of those categories, you'll see in the expenditures paid area, that's the second grouping, the third column shows you that you had a $9 million unexpended appropriation. Of course, the special revenues are the combination of the co-op building fund and child nutrition, and then that is broken out on C-1, Schedule C-1 toward the back. The upper portion of that that you're looking at, say, for instance, the general fund, you'll see we estimated $9.6 million in revenues other than the fund balance forward, and the column on the right, we collected 8.5 against the 9.6 estimated portion. The combination of that 9 million estimated miscellaneous revenue and the fund balance down at the bottom equals that expenditure area, which is your original appropriation, the $12,819. And of the $12,819, we only utilized 9 million of that in the third column. Doesn't give you a balance of appropriation, it just gives you we were well under the 12 original.
So our fund balance for last year was $5,675,646 at the end of the third column.
Right, compare to the line just above that, the 3.1.
Maybe the other year.
Right.
Okay. That's what you were saying.
That's what I was wanting to see.
Okay.
It may not be relevant, but it means a lot to us to know.
Oh, it is very relevant.
That we're in the right spot at the right time.
And those could be conditions of annual stipend, if we maintain and retain, and it just needs to be stated.
Yeah. So if we came under budget, that could be a reason to-
A reason, and if you were over budget, it might be the opposite.
And we can't take it away, but-
Yeah. Make it a one-time.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? We need to motion to approve this.
Well, I was gonna ask one too.
Sure.
How come this is in Enid and not in Alba?
Because my secretary is in Enid, and I'm attesting to it. Right there, that's my signature. We're stating that we are bonded and have adequate securities in case we have any misrepresentation in our audit presentation. That's a statement that we deliver to you. And you can see, up here it would say Garfield County, that's where we reside.
I would move that we approve the audit as presented.
Second, double second.
Slater?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Martin?
Yes.
Parker?
Aye.
Ellis?
Okay, now that you've accepted it, I need your signatures that you were present and that you are in agreement of any corrective procedures that we recommended. Pass that around. There's no designated place for the clerk to sign, so clerk would sign on the right-hand
Yes, I'm just a member.
Yeah, you can just pick one.
Is it legal to ask another question?
Picture.
Now that we-
It's your mint, your hour.
Well, I just, I noticed the bond indebtedness. I wanna be able to understand that, simply 'cause, you know, we may look at things down the future. It shows, is it paid May the 1st, 2019, is that correct?
That's your last principal payment.
Right, okay.
And at the current time, you had, at June 30, 15, you had $1,350,000 outstanding, and in May of this fiscal year, you'll retire another $315,000 of that.
I was just, I was making sure I understood when was paid off.
Yeah, the principal's 1.260, $1,260, and then the additional money represents the interest.
Is there a reason the interest rate changed?
It fluctuates, and that's the way the banks bid it. Yeah, because some of them, if you bid it, if they bid it straight through at 3, somebody's gonna give you a better deal with 2.85 and then 3.1 because the interest will be lighter Hold it there, on the right-hand line, on the line on the right side.
I put clerk on where my-
But that's fine. Just any one of those lines on the right side.
You wipe that out, won't you?
Oh, I'll take care of it. We'll just leave it on there. The state can call us and say, what's this all about?
It's Alba, America's new little thing.
And we need to have it notaried. Do you have your notary?
I don't, but I'll write it down.
Okay. Steve, can I borrow you?
Buddy, we don't have to provide a response with that to anybody, do we?
You already did.
To you?
To me, yeah.
In that letter?
Yes, the letter, that's what we sent back to the state auditor and the state-
Tiffany would like to read it.
And in our audit, I do point out that we do not audit the response itself. We leave that up to our upper agency.
Sorry. No good deed, I was unpunished.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Terrence, you're on my copy.
Okay, I'll tell you what I'll do, so you won't miss any of the next two. Don't make your copy.
Any other questions for Buddy before these? What do you think this new bill's gonna go, do you think it'll pass?
I hope it doesn't pass.
It'll really mess up, you all want it.
What it is, is the, some of the situations we've had around the state about audit findings that are pretty significant, like down south, $350,000 of fraud, and you noted that, I don't know whether you're familiar with that item or not, but superintendent and the assistant treasurer were both released. On the very next day, the assistant treasurer committed suicide. I mean, that's obvious, something was awry there, but other things, missing some payroll phantom ghost employees, and another thing on the eastern part of the state. We go through, and it's not to say we don't miss something, but we go through and we compare your employment roster with several payrolls during the year to make sure that there aren't phantom items in there. And one of the things we do is when we sample expenditures, it can be a $20 expenditure or it can be a $20,000 expenditure, and if it's to a company, then we'll look in the book and see if there's really a company there. And so, like I say, we can't test everything, but we do look through most of the information to make sure that we're not abusing our finances. But the situation with changing auditors every five years, the ASCPA has come out even with a letter that says that changing audit companies periodically reduces the quality because of the lack of familiarity with the client, and it also increases the prices. So, you know, just keep that in mind.
It's hard on the staff, too.
It is, it is. And, you know, I'm familiar with what Becky does, I know what Terry does, what Joanne does, and when we go, come in here, and if it's something out of the routine, then it just, you know, puts on a beacon that we need to follow up on. And Berlita at the lunchroom, about every other year, we go down there and we hit her pretty hard with her inventories and her procedures and whatever. If it's NutraKids or Infinite Campus, we test that and go back into the receipts versus the deposits, and, you know, we could miss something because we can't check everything, you know, 900,000 entries, we don't have time to do that, and you don't want to pay us to go to that depth, but I'm not for the changing every five years, 'cause it's gonna, it's gonna, it'll disturb what you all go through as well.
And like you say, it costs more money.
Yeah. Your prices will go up.
We're gonna talk about that here a little bit, some of the legislative stuff.
Okay. Anything else?
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Buddy, appreciate it very much.
Thank you all.
Be safe.
Item eight, consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved by one board vote unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on any or all of these items. The consent agenda consists of discussion, consideration, and approval of the following items, addition of items of new business.
Fair enough.
Minutes of the February 2016 regular board meeting. I'm gonna go ahead. 8C, approval of the treasurer's report on the status of funds and investments. 8D, approval of the activity fund report. 8E, approval of activity account fundraisers. 8F, approval of inter-account transfers. 8G, approval of function changes. And 8H, approval of child nutrition report.
Anybody find anything wrong with the minutes? Okay, if we'll go to the treasurer's report and look at your first attachment, summary of the financial activities as of 2/29/2016, and honestly, if you just go to the bottom column, and in that left-hand column, general fund for operations, at this point in time, we still have $7.9 million. At this point in time, we still have seven point nine million dollars in our general fund we have five months ago. And again, our salaries are already being encumbered. Most of our utilities have been encumbered and so forth, so general fund is set in really good shape. Co-op fund, one hundred forty-nine thousand, relatively good shape for, for that. Our building fund is, and again, taking out salaries out of that at the beginning of the year has built that up to about one point five million dollars. We are spending a little money out of that on some repairs this month and so forth, but that's in really good shape at this point in time for the remainder of the year. Child nutrition, still got seventy-four thousand, almost seventy-five. Big five, which is the preschool, did you go blank?
I can't get out of it.
Is the old Head Start program, they still owe a couple months yet, so there's some more income there, and there'll be some more income from our monthly. And then, so, you know, sinking fund, you heard that from Buddy. Senior achievement, we still have half a million dollars in that. We've paid, I think, all of our second semester so far out of that, so that fund will be able to fund scholarships again next year.
Is that the share money?
That's the share money, yes.
And we just didn't send that down to the community's foundation? Or is everything else down there?
Yeah, and see, that's been prior to the foundation and everything, so that's always been in our, you know, situation. Okay? And then the finance report, you can see the encumbrance comparison, general fund, you know, from FY fifteen to sixteen, general fund, encumbrance, six hundred fifty-eight thousand up. Warrant comparison, five hundred eighty-four thousand. General revenue, we still have about twelve percent of all the taxes and everything yet to be collected and so forth for FY sixteen. And I'll show you some information on that letter later. Our gross production is down because we had such a great gross production in fifteen. But we're still ahead monthly on our gross production predictions from our audit and so forth. So, honestly, right now, our monies look really good at this point in time. And then the investments are on your computer also, and they have changed a whole lot from last month.
I would like to ask Betty Carroll how we look in comparison to other schools, but wonder, you said we
From talking to a lot of people lately, we, our, our finances are really good compared to a lot of schools. And again, part of that has to do with that forty-seven percent increase in our total school evaluation. That, all these oil wells and pipelines and electric lines and Monica Schmidt and that program that we were in, they found all that for the public school, which has helped tremendously. Next year, we probably will not receive any state aid whatsoever. We will be on, off the state aid. And that last page, can you all see that very well?
Sideways.
Yeah.
She sent it to us. We printed it off.
Yeah, I, I put one at your seat.
Should be one in your seat. I was going to go to a finance meeting last Friday, and they turned it, cut it out because of basketball and everything. And this was some of the information that they wanted me to bring to this meeting so that we could work on our carryover funds and so forth. So Terry and I worked on it. They're just comparisons of what we had. And the difference between FY fifteen and sixteen, that last column over there, and you see all those reds, is because we're still collecting some of that information for that monies, okay? Like gross production, we got through more months of gross production. We don't have all the admin or earnings on investments, county mill. So those are all in there. And if you'll look over in the blue columns, see, we've got seventy-nine percent collected so far, admin or tax. And you just go down the line, and that gives you all of those figures. So we have currently collected almost thirteen million dollars, so we've got about three million dollars to collect yet for the major. So that was some of the information that we're going to take over to that meeting to try to come up with a carryover funds and to see where we were at compared to others and so forth. So that's just some added information for you.
That's very good.
Have you got any questions on any of that that I can try to explain?
I think this is a very good report.
We're trying to learn.
You might like is the variance between year to year. You know, if we had another column comparing fifteen to sixteen or fourteen to fifteen. But I mean, this is an excellent report.
Okay. We will try to continue with some of this information, too. No, it, it currently is going to be tight, too. Okay. Activity fund report. Any questions with that? Still set in pretty good shape with all of our activities. If you see some big expenses, I can tell you that lunch program has reimbursed about twenty thousand dollars into the general fund. We purchased some football out of the activity account for new uniforms and coaching clothes, softball uniforms. We purchased a computer replacement and a cost of thirty-four hundred dollars. And that's coming out of our insurance fund that those students paid twenty-five dollars apiece to check them out, and so that replaced some computers. Florida trip, we've encumbered about fifty-six hundred dollars for electric gold to go to Florida. For your information, we sent Oklahoma Secretary Association two thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars from our district basketball game that we hosted. So that's the money that we made profit for the secondary association. Also, Tim Argo is going to spend sixteen hundred dollars, he's going to buy every student a yearbook for his school, have his activity fund this year. FCCLA is going to state convention, they're also going to be able to go to Frontier City, and that's about eleven hundred dollars. Our gold bug pins this year costing us right at a thousand dollars for the number of students, so. Like Buddy said, all purchase orders are signed before we order, and everything's pretty good shape there.
Becky, you were to be commended for that nice thing you said about you. Did you take it to heart?
I did.
Because that was very nice.
That was very nice.
What's that?
He bragged on how we handle our activity funds, and that's who handles our activity funds, and so. That's a big deal, and we got a lot of money here, a lot of money, so thank you.
Activity account fundraisers, I think you got a sheet there, and you can look at the March seventh of the revenue that has been brought in from those fundraisers. Our people are doing a better job of getting this information to us, and this is another thing that Becky we've added this year, is trying to get this information back to you earlier. And then the fundraising request we had, we had seniors, somebody didn't have a dinner at a basketball game, so they went ahead and did one. Football, they're requesting to do a golf tournament and a labor auction again this year on May the thirteenth. And then seniors two thousand eighteen had a basketball concession and made profit five hundred dollars from Washington. Going to collect some money for a Down syndrome student that they have to pay into the Down syndrome, and also going to have a little education about the Down syndrome at Washington. Anything else you want to say on that, Allison?
No, I was just coming to bring awareness to that, you know, that we're all different, but we're all alike. And we are, including a middle school student who also has Down syndrome as well as a Lincoln student, have all been invited to participate in the activity as well. And we're going to, I think that the World Down Syndrome theme is rock your socks. Everyone's going to wear crazy socks. And our kids are going to like color socks and decorate with them. And so I think it's just going to bring a lot of awareness to our students of, you know, supporting one another with our differences.
Any questions? The inter-account transfer is that one hundred and twelve elementary yearbooks at fifty dollars apiece from Lincoln School Activity to the high school for a thousand six hundred and eighty dollars. Function changes. And again, we're not spending any more money or less money, it's just changing money around. And Mr. Carroll talked a little bit and mentioned that. Most of this money is because of the National Board Certified stipends. Those teachers do get paid, and it comes to the school district, and then, so we have to change that and then increase that in those areas so that we can pay for the National Board Certified. We did get a little extra money in textbook and also technology and ACE remediation. And then had a little bit of co-op money that we needed to because they have National Board Certified that had to change. And also, they had a little bit more professional development that we had to change out of their area to make all of that equal and balanced and so forth each and every time. And again, there's no new monies, there's no less money. It's changing money within the budget itself, and then changing in those fund programs to make it all balance out so that Mr. Carroll is happy.
So we're not being reimbursed for these National Certified?
Yes, we are. No, we are.
That was a year or two ago, weren't we?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, can we have a list of who those are? I mean, is that something we can know?
Sure, we can get you a list.
It'd be nice to congratulate them in some way.
What do we have, Nikki, seven?
Seven, I think.
Seven.
All of, all of our speech paths are because of that, and also I believe Dana Manning, Chelly Woods, Starba.
Candy Algrim.
Candy Algrim. But we'll get you a list.
Well, it's just nice. It's a good way to congratulate them, so.
So again, no problems there. Do you have any questions? Again, on the child nutrition, as you saw la, earlier, we have about eighty thousand dollars left to go with the month, and we still have incoming. So, pretty, pretty good shape there. Maybe not as good as what we were a year ago because food costs were up a little bit. We carried over eighty-one thousand dollars last year in child nutrition. And costs have gone up a little bit, but, you know, we, we got right at twenty-four thousand dollars worth of inventory left for the year, and we will still get some some from the state end, so commodities and that type of stuff. And we still have money coming in each month from our eaters. I think that our E, is that what you call it, Becky?
E-fund.
E-fund is going to work. We've got more people paying online now. Having a little bit of problems of taking care of in the books, so we're going to go ahead and create another account so that we can just make one check at the end of the month. We paid that, working with Todd on that, and that's not a problem, so. But we're getting more, more people working on that to where they are paying off their debit cards and so forth. Okay. Purchase orders.
Yeah, we need a.
Oh, we need a vote, okay. Excuse me.
Need a motion on item eight.
I'm making a motion we approve item A through H.
Second.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Martin?
Yes.
Ellis?
Aye. Item nine, vote to approve or not to approve the purchase order encumbrances for the following funds for FY two thousand sixteen listed A, B, C, and I can't scroll.
D and E.
D and E. Okay.
Okay, some of the purchase orders that I've picked out, purchase order six eighty-one. It's a contract to complete our E-rate. E-rate is becoming a horrendous job because of changes and so forth. And AT&amp;T still claims that we owe them around fourteen thousand dollars. And there's been some discrepancies in this in the past, and we did pay a bill a year ago of about twelve thousand because of it. And this is one of the better, we went into contract like a month ago and brought it to the board, so this is a good contract for us, and will save us money in the long run.
Can we switch that to Pioneer or somebody else?
It is through Pioneer.
It is through Pioneer? I thought we did switch. Okay, so it's, we owe AT&amp;T through Pioneer.
Somehow. This is, this is before I was superintendent.
Yeah, it started.
This is back in two thousand nine or ten.
And we just keep arguing over that?
You bet.
Well, we did for years, and then we finally, I mean, settled like, I mean, a year or two ago.
But they're still trying to.
Why did we settle, and then they done us for more?
Right.
I guess.
Is there interest or something?
Yeah, we're all pioneering.
That's what I thought.
So anyway, this will help us out with that and keep us out of that.
This is before Pioneer.
Purchase order six eighty-five, it's a replacement freezer at Longfellow. Costs almost within eighty percent to fix it as to buy a new one. Seven oh three, we had the wind damage again at the softball field toward a ceiling right off the visitor's dugout, and we have a ten thousand dollar deductible, so this was the cost to get that fixed.
Our new softball field?
Yeah. Both dugouts have blown off. We had to get them fixed. Seven oh nine, it completes the lights in the gymnasium to LEDs. We made sure that during basketball, we got them on the courts, now we got them underneath the stands, so all the LED, LED lights are completed in there. Seven sixteen is an air conditioner replacement, and that is in the old counselor's office at the high school where we do a lot of para. Kids will meet in there and exercise and so forth. And the building fund, we spent some money on some weed eaters and edges for some help. Do you have any questions on any other encumbrances?
We have a motion on nine?
Move that we approve the purchase order encumbrances those referenced in nine A, nine B, nine C, nine D, and nine Yes, there are. nine B, nine C, nine D, and nine, I guess there are mention on nine E.
Second.
Slater?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Martin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Ellis?
Aye. Item ten, principals report, Harding Wood.
I will preface before I start, they're going to be a little shorter because they need to get back and they want to get back to the parent teacher conferences.
Um, I was going to share with you guys, last Wednesday, Pete Phillips and I went to the 2015 Oklahoma Certified Healthy Schools Workshop in awards banquet and all five of the schools in the district received the excellence, um, honor, which is the top honor. There's a basic merit excellence for, um, just help in wellness activities for our students and our staff, so that was, um, a nice thing for us to be honored with. And I was just going to also share that Washington's preparing for our summer learning academy and working with the Golden, Golden Gallop again for the summer for the lunch program.
Okay, first I'd like to thank Allison because Allison did a lot of work on the, uh, healthy school stuff and, and we really appreciate that. Uh, last Monday and Tuesday, we had our BB gun safety shoot at, at Longfellow and, and bring in a lot of our game rangers, a lot of law enforcement and, and really stress the importance of safety in, in using firearms and, and, uh, our students are, I can assure you, are very well supervised during this time. Uh, you know, we have, uh, game rangers from, from all over northwest Oklahoma. Uh, Mrs. Swallow was contacted by the National NRA Magazine and they're going to put an article in their national magazine about, uh, Allen Schools and, and doing the, our BB gun shooting. So I'm not going to talk much more about that because I'd like for her to come and speak to you guys about that and feel very proud of her in that situation. And, you know, we've been doing this for over 20 years and, and, you know, knock on wood and cross our fingers and, and we have not had a gun incident now but since, uh, we started it and so we're very proud of that, so.
The little interview they did of Mrs. Swallow was good.
Yes, yes.
It was very good.
At the middle school, the main thing's going on right now is we were preparing for state testing coming up end of April. Um, we're going to miss about nine days for spring break, so teachers are concentrating really hard on that, using resources that, uh, we have put together in the last couple of years to help with that. And we're also beginning to work, like high school is, we're beginning to work on pre-enrollment, trying to get numbers together for next year and see what, see what our needs are and see what kind of number we're going to have and what kind of classes we're going to have up there. And that's the main things that are going on, on our high school.
At the high school in the last month, we have had curriculum meetings. We met with every curricular area, every teacher, sets of coaches, um, and with the English department, math department, and talked about pre-enrollment, what we need to offer, are we going in the right direction, what exactly we need to be doing. Um, we're going to, we're going to tweak a few things, nothing, nothing major, but, um, we're going to do that. Uh, last Tuesday, or last Wednesday and Thursday, we did pre-enrollment with all of the incoming seniors, juniors, and sophomores. And, um, so we've got some numbers on classes there and we've got a few offerings that we haven't offered in a while, a long time, and, and we've, uh, kind of, oh, just tweaked the curriculum a little bit and offer some things that, and try to make it more fun and, and some of those things, but it's, um, it's really good. We're going to come down after spring break and get with our middle schoolers that are going to be, our eighth graders that are going to be freshmen and try to get those guys' schedules locked up and do some of those things. But we are probably three quarters of the way finished with our master schedule for next year already, so we, and of course, it's all in pencil. I've got everything in pencil, so we erase and scratch and Mrs. Duncan helps me greatly with that, but I kind of put everything down, then I give it to her and she says, you can't do that, you can't do that, or that looks good, or whatever.
Women.
So she kind of, she's a good sounding voice than me to look at those kinds of things.
I don't want to know.
But it's like, uh, because we do some things and, and it's, uh, and like I said, it's, it's really good and she's, like I said, she does, uh, she's real knowledgeable about what we can and can't do and, um, you know, the relationships that we have with Northwestern and the career tech and those kinds of things, so, um, like I said, she keeps me, keeps me legal and I like that.
Any questions for them? Guys, go to work.
Thank you.
First thing, I need to read this letter to y'all. This letter is to inform you of my decision to retire at the end of the 2015-2016 school year. My last day will be Friday, May the 20th, 2016. It's truly been an honor and a blessing to be part of the Allen Schools. I've had the opportunity to teach, the best teachers in the state, and I know I've had the best students. This is a very tough decision for me because all I, all I have done in my entire life is go to school. One last thing and I'm finished. The patterns of music and all of the arts are the keys to learning. Plato. Sincerely, Ramona Cummings. So Ramona is retired at the end of this school year. Truly believe that her final decision was because of the time that she's not going to see her daughter in school because she's going to miss one of the biggest musical things this spring when they do the OU folies and she's going to be in Florida. And she's been contemplating retiring for two years, so. We have opened this up in the school district so far and after five days, we will open it outside and try to find a replacement. Rumor has that Sally Schmidt was going to retire. She is not. She has talked to me at the buses today. She will be here next year. So she is not. So this is the only one that we know of that's going to retire.
Is there a date that they have to submit their, um, letter?
There is a May the first date for our district, uh, to get unpaid, sickly paid. And then state department retirement lasts at least three months prior to your first check to do that. But honestly, Ramona is doing this so that we can go out early and try to find somebody because she's been a team player for 34 years. Nineteen, I think, sweepstakes, which are state champions out of all that time. So those are Hall of Fame numbers. She's just been an excellent teacher for our kids and for.
For community.
Community, you know? So. We will replace her, but we will not replace her in the same footsteps, or however you can say it more eloquently than I can. We won't fill the shoes, but not quite is.
Yep.
Charlotte, Charlotte said that when she was interviewed, she, she and her were walking down the hall. She says, I don't know whether I can come here or not. She said, there's no men in Allen. And 10 or 12 years later, she can't, she found John and, so.
That's neat.
But it's, it's, it's been a great ride, I can tell you that.
She is a symbol of excellence. It'd be nice to be able to do something for her, right? I don't know what's appropriate.
Well, I don't know, unofficially, I wish I had to repay her, I, there may be something in the books, I don't.
I hope so.
Okay? But I don't, I don't know for sure. We've already looked at the fundraisers when we looked at, uh, so I'll try with my communications. Couple of bills that I'm really concerned with and they are the different vouchers, different ways of, of writing and so forth. And basically what they want to do is they want to be able to send kids to private schools with local monies. No matter how that comes out, even if we don't have a student go to a private school or go to a home school, they're going to have to fund this because most of, at this time, the educational fund is funded on 90% of the kids in the state of Oklahoma because that's who we educate right now. So you add that 10%, the money's got to come from somewhere. So it's got to come out of the general fund somehow, so it's going to hurt schools in the long run. The other problem with vouchers and charter schools and so forth and so on is that school could deny a student coming. For any reason whatsoever, they don't have to take them. They could be kicked out and where does the money go? Does it stay at that charter school or at that private school? You know, let's say they go to school until October 1 and then that's our date for accreditation and turning and that student's been in trouble and then all of a sudden they kick them out and they get that money and that pays pretty much a quarter of a school year. Does that local school district get that money back? Those are some answers that our legislators can't tell us at this point in time, to be real honest with you. I don't know if Mr. Potter knows about this, but House Bill 2860 creates the Oklahoma Civics Education Act requiring students to take and pass the United States Citizenship Test to graduate or to receive the GED. So he'll have to change his curriculum because we don't even teach civics. And, you know, if they keep these other mandates, that may be an extra teacher. I don't know, so there's more money and where's it coming from? Senate Bill 1170 eliminates a state mandated end of instruction exams and grants to the local school districts, school boards, to discretion to select a nationally-normed assessment. So if that happens, we think that's a good deal and we may be looking at the ACT because it has those pre-tests cleared down, I believe, to the third grade now, and then we can ha, take that information and, and take that and drive our curriculum from those statistics. So we think that's a good idea. The other one is the one, it's sales tax that University of Oklahoma President Born is, is really backing and so forth. To me, that is the only new monies coming into the state of Oklahoma for education. Everything else is Robin Peter to pay Paul. Unless they get some, unless they don't allow the tax breaks to happen for the income tax and they have a moratorium on that. The only problem with the one cent sales tax is that if it's not a line item into the budget for teacher salaries, it could cost all of the schools in the state of Oklahoma that's not on school formula money. If we're not on school formula money and this passes and it's written in as part of the school formula, our school district with our local monies could pay as much as $289,000 for teacher pay raises. So those, those are the concerns that I really have. There are a lot of other education deals. Has to do with the evaluation and, and things of that nature and quantitative and on this TLE that we've gone backwards on, but those are the big items that I think are very important to our school district. And also, uh, our special education, district determination, all, all of that information. We met all of the state requirements, so we're in good shape there. So, you know, that's, all the communications really I have, we're, I'm still watching the, uh, legislature almost every day, you know? You can get on to their home site and you can even listen to them live and, you know, it's pretty interesting. So I try to anytime there's an educational deal. I am still going to a financial meeting. I was supposed to go last Friday, but because of basketball, uh, they moved it to the 30th. So I'll be going to that financial meeting on the 30th to see what all happens. Any questions? That's all I have.
Item 12A, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve or not to approve the contract for audit of the 2015-2016 fiscal year to be conducted during the 2016-17 fiscal year with the firm of Charles W. Carroll P.A.
And I would make that recommendation to the board so that we have that continuity and so forth and we will work with him on the right language if we so do anything next year.
Yes, we do the motion.
I'm making a motion that we approve the contract for audit of the 15-16, uh, fiscal year, um, with the firm of Charles Douglas Carroll.
Second.
Martin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Ellis?
Aye. 12B, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve or not to approve the agreement to renew the OK TLE employment evaluation system for the 2016-2017 school year.
By state law, we are to have one or another evaluation system. This is the one that we have been working with and it's, uh, been very useful. They're going to be changing it and they stay up with it and I would recommend to the board that we continue with the OK TLE employment evaluation system.
This is what we evaluate teachers on or principals? Teachers, okay.
I so moved.
Second.
McDermott?
Aye.
Uh, Martin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Ellis?
Aye. Discussion with, 12C, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve or not to approve the software lease agreement with municipal accounting system for the fiscal year 2016-2017.
And this is the software that we use for our activity accounts and our general account and so forth. And we have looked at different ones this year, but this is our recommendation to the board that we continue with municipal accounting.
So moved.
Second.
Slater?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Martin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Ellis?
Aye. 12D, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve or not to approve Jacob Gould as the assistant soccer coach for the 2015-2016 soccer season. Salary will be $1,200 and in compliance with the approved extra duties salary schedule for beginning assistant coaching duties.
Uh, last year we had Reverend Smith that helped and, uh, Jacob approached me and he talked to Margot Hamilton, the soccer coach, and they visited and her recommendation is for Jacob to help with the soccer and I also approved, so I'm making that recommendation to the board.
I make a motion that we approve 12D.
Second.
McDermott?
Aye.
Martin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Ellis?
Aye. Item 13, propose executive session and discuss principal contracts and staffing for the 2016-17 fiscal year.
Need a motion?
Sure, right? Yeah.
Freedom.
Freedom?
Yep.
I make a motion, move into executive session. McDermott?
Aye.
Martin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Ellis?